...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. We're going to get into, I need a motion to approve the agenda. Thanks, Brandon. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Greg. Betsy, please. All in favor, so they can fight to say no. Action items for closed session. What do we got? Just minutes, Betsy? We got minutes from March 21st, 2016, April 7th, April 19th, and March 7th.
I'd like to pull the minutes from April 7th for further revisions.
So just table them, the April 7th?
Yeah.
Okay. So we're approving the other three. Do I have a motion to approve them? It's presented.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks.
Second.
Thank you. Betsy, please.
Yes, Maddox.
Yes.
Seren.
Yes.
Weitzel.
Yes.
Worley.
Yes.
Yerivitch.
Yes.
And Kopp.
Yes. Moving on, communications, 4-1. We got recognition from GHS. Once again, our WISE team had an outstanding season by a group of outstanding young men and women. And I'm going to introduce their coach, Julie Corey. Explain a little bit about the season they had and what they did.
Well, I'm Julie Corey. I'm a sponsor of the WISE team. And just to let you all know what WISE is, it's worldwide youth in science and engineering, and it is sponsored by the University of Illinois College of Engineering. They do competitions all throughout the state, and it's an academic competition. And when I tell people what it is, they're like, "Well, that sounds so boring." We test in biology, chemistry, physics, computer science, math, English, engineering graphics. It doesn't get better than that. So it really is fun. And our kids have done very, very well. And as a team, we've done very, very well. So I'd like the members of the WISE team, varsity WISE team, to come on up here and I'll explain everything. Come on up. We'll see who's here. Well, it is a team competition, and we are here because of the collective efforts of all of the members of the team. Thank you. So all the members participate. They all participate in two subjects, and we compete at Lincolnland for our regional competition, which is basically the CSA. Our sectional competition is at Illinois College, and it takes in all of the CSA area, plus all the way over to Quincy. And then, we're lucky enough, we went on to Champaign. A couple of our members that were JV members last year and are now on varsity, Tony is not here. Grant, Ben O'Meara, is right here. Grant was a JV member for us and did great last year, participated great this year, and as a senior next year, we really hope that he will continue being on the team. Logan Kimble. Logan is over here on the end, Logan Kimble. Logan, on the varsity team, once Logan figured out the testing procedure there, at Illinois College, at our sectional level, Logan earned a second place in physics at the sectional level. Tommy Young is not here, but I want to let everyone know that Tommy plays third in English, both at the Lincolnland Regional, and third in English at Illinois College. Kate, what'd you call her? Kate was a first-place English at Lincolnland, a first-place in English at Illinois College. And just to let everybody else know, Kate, two years ago, was a state finisher in biology, fifth place in the state of Illinois for schools our size, so she's in the books over at Champaign. Emily Wendell. Emily Wendell is one of our seniors, and it's her first year on the team. Emily was third place in physics at Lincolnland at our regional. Cody Minor is not here, but Cody was second place at Lincolnland in biology and tied for first in chemistry at Illinois College. Jay Schreger, right here. Jay is our computer science person. Jay got first place, earned a first place in computer science at our regional at Lincolnland, a first place in computer science at Illinois College, and earned fourth place in computer science at the University of Illinois at Champaign. Congratulations, Jay. Matt Stickle, right over here. That's Matt. Matt is engineering graphics. Matt earned a second place in our regional, a first place at our sectional, and is also on the books at Champaign with a very well-earned sixth place in engineering graphics at the University of Illinois. Ben Lukeman is not here, but his parents are. Ben was Matt's competition. Matt or Ben earned a first place at our regional in engineering graphics, a second place at Illinois College, and at the state level is fifth in the state in engineering graphics. Ushlin, right here. Ushlin Gupta. Ushlin is a sophomore. Ushlin earned a first place at our regional in math, a first place in math again at Illinois College, and a second place in biology at Illinois College. Thara. Thara Nellmamthu, right over here. Thara's been on the team for three years. Relax for that. Thara, this year, at Lincolnland, second place in physics, first place in chemistry. At Illinois College, Thara tied with Cody Minor for first place in chemistry and first place in physics. And at state, Thara earned a sixth place in chemistry across the state for schools our size. But also, Thara's name is all over the finals over there, because in 2014, when Thara was a sophomore, she earned third place in biology at the state level. Last year as a junior, she earned fourth place in biology and fifth place in chemistry, so she has been quite solidified as a state finalist there. Congratulations, Thara. And our last two here, Alvin and Kelly. Kelly Youth, another sophomore on our team, third place in biology, third place in math at Lincolnland, third in biology, third in math at Illinois College. And then, at the state finals in Champaign, when they called burning, second place biology at the state at the University of Illinois at Champaign. She was tied with that, with Alvin. Alvin, here, Alvin White, at Lincolnland, second place in chemistry, first place in biology. What do you call a three-way tie?
Three-way tie.
Try tie?
It was Alvin and Thara and Cody who tied for first at Illinois College, but Alvin also got a first place in biology. And then, at the state level, twice, his name got called, fourth place in chemistry, and then tied with Kelly for second place in biology. Alvin and Kelly missed first place by one point. One point with that. And I just found out on Friday, their second-place finishing entitles them to a scholarship from the University of Illinois at Champaign. I'm guessing pending state appropriations, but I don't know. That it's from the, they have to go to Champaign, obviously, and they have to be accepted by the School of Engineering, but there's a scholarship that they're negotiating for them. So let me get you these certificates, Kelly. Alvin, congratulations. Matt Stickle. Jake. Thara. Benny. Logan. Alvin. Ushlin. So what's it going to be next month? So there they are, our varsity. I just want to say, it was really, really a lot of fun when we were winning and handing out these medals. Ted O'Neal was supposed to be over there. It was really fun.
Welcome to stick around, too. Are you excited? What's going on? Run! All right, at this time, we offer any citizens opportunity to address the school board on any agenda items. Anybody got anything they want to address the board on before we get going here? Nope? Okay, moving on, we got consent agenda items, 5-1 through 5-10. Anybody wish to pull any out?
Well, I don't, I need to pull 5.3, which was previously mentioned. We can't approve those, those closed-session minutes about some revisions.
Okay, well, this is the special meeting. These are the open part.
Oh, okay, sorry. Yeah, sorry.
You good, then?
Okay, yeah.
No? Anybody got anything, then? Brandon, first? Make that motion?
Second.
Thank you. Betsy, please.
Yes, Seren.
Yes.
Weitzel.
Yes.
Worley.
Yes.
Yerivitch.
Yes.
Maddox.
Yep.
And Kopp.
Yes. Moving on, personnel consent items. We got 6-1 to 6-15. Anybody want to pull any out?
I need to pull 6.14, please. Principal contract addendum.
Okay, any others? No? Okay, then we have a motion to approve 6-1 to 6-13 and 6-15. Thanks, Brandon. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Dwayne. Betsy, please.
Yep, Weitzel.
Yes.
Worley.
Yes.
Yerivitch.
Yes.
Maddox.
Yes.
Seren.
Yes.
Kopp.
Yes. Congratulations, Mr. Hay. 6-14?
Oh, oh, oh.
It's all right. Congratulations.
Before... Could we just take a moment here?
Go ahead. Anybody want to pull any out?
You want to pull it? No, I, okay, no, I had...
Okay, sure. And where we just hired a new football coach, guys.
No, I was concentrating on a different item that I had to pull, so I apologize for that, you know? Can't multitask with two items at the same time. But, in any event, congratulations to you. I'm sure that, you know, it's a whole new level of being a public person, and sometimes that can be a little, I don't know, fun, challenging, but in any event, congratulations to you.
I'm very honored. Having been here for 20 years, I know what an honor it is to do this job and have this position, so thank you.
Very, that's really nice.
I'd also like to, you know, I'd also like to say something. This is, this is, this is a big-ticket item, and, you know, Ball Chatham has not only a tremendous reputation for academics and the programs, but athletics as well. There is a high degree of expectation in regards to performance, whether it's in the classroom, or on the field, or on the court, or wherever the case might be. And we were fortunate to have some quality candidates come to us for the fact that it's been such a tremendous program. And so, my hat's off to you, Dave, because I know it's quite the undertaking to take a program that's had as much success. You know, it's one thing when you come in and you pick up a program that's been in the basement for a long time, but this, this, this program has had a rich tradition, of which you've been a part of. And so, hats off to you for the success that you've had over the 20-plus years, and I know that you're going to also take us another step into the future here and see some great things. So, congratulations to you for what you've done and what you will be doing, so thank you very much. Absolutely.
Um, may I also make one suggestion? I mean, not suggestion, but, you know, actually...
Wow! She's got a defense for you.
You know, you know what is so nice? What's so nice, when I moved here 10 years ago? Football games are a real community event. They really are, and that is, I mean, that's not a suggestion, that's a statement of fact. So, in any event, you're also helping that, oh, I don't know, the well-being of the community, so...
Thank you, Mr. Hay. Congratulations.
All right, 6-14. Anyone who's in 6-14?
I need to, I'd like to table that.
Table that?
We have to pull 6.14, principal contracted, and we just have to tweak the language a little bit.
We do. I mean, just to extension that language that was supposed to be tweaked and put in there...
It's on Joe's desk.
Is that on Joe's desk?
Yes.
Well, I'll tell you what, we're going to hold off, because actually, we're going to take care of it all at once in our next meeting, so it actually ended up being a good thing, so...
Okay. Very good. Moving on, new business, 7-1, food service renewal at Y-17. Who gets that? That's you, Mr. Clover.
I get that. You have in your packet an email from Brett Wheeler. Also in your package is the bid that this district did a year ago. On, I think it's the second or third page of that bid, there was a rollover provision. It's the recommendation of the food service director and me to recommend to the superintendent that you roll this over for one year. The company's going to increase prices 2%. If you look at that bid that was done last year, 2% is about $11,000. This bid for Cisco was about $11,000 less than the second bid. We get a, we get a, we get a year free, almost. So, we're recommending you roll this over. If you have any questions about chickens, or substitutes, or whatever...
Peaches?
Peaches. When we met with Cisco, I told the Cisco people, "You don't have to please me, this is the lady you have to please." And this young lady, simply, her complaint was, "They substitute too much, you know? Instead of sending a pork chop, they send a lamb chop," or whatever. They've got to stop the substituting and get her what she wants when she wants it. And they've promised to do better this year. We'll see. We're recommending that you roll that over at 2%.
So along those lines, when they substitute, is it typically something more expensive?
That's a good question, sir. I can't answer, Mary.
It's at the same price. It's at the same price.
Equal or better?
Absolutely.
But sometimes, their hands are tied, too. There was some kind of a bird flu about mid-year or last year, and they just shut down any bird. You're not going to get anything, period.
But the other items that were, you know, maybe cereal bars or something like that, I spent the first month picking the invoices apart, item by item, and we prevailed, you know, croutons for breadcrumbs and those kind of things, and...
Okay, so it's not, you're comfortable it's not a game they're playing, or something?
No.
Okay.
No, no, you know, there's documentation. The avian bird flu was a big deal, a really big deal, for the, for the market and the availability of turkey and...
If they, if they did play the game, sir, next year when you do the bid, you have to take the lowest responsible bid, and that kind of stuff is irresponsible. So they're not going to do that. They want to keep this contract.
And I would just like to point out, I wanted to thank Mary for all the work that you've done, working with Russ and Charlotte, and, I mean, there was a great deal of work that had to be done, research, which we've all sat down and shared, is why we're at the point that we're at, so I just want to thank you for all the extra work on that.
Well-earned.
Any other questions? If not, then do I have a motion to approve? So moved. Thanks, Brandon.
Second.
Thanks, Dwayne. Betsy, please.
Yes, Maddox.
Yes.
Seren.
Yes.
Weitzel.
Yes.
Worley.
Yes.
Yerivitch.
Yes.
Kopp.
Yes. Please. Moving on, 7-2.
I've been working so hard to make sure they're not here.
Summer school, GMS, GHS. You get a boat and you walk out. You get a boat and you get a walkout.
We're seeking approval to run summer school, just as we have in the past. No changes in terms of what we're offering, what we're asking for. Obviously, enrollment in the classes will determine what runs and how many teachers we need and so on. We are going to take it back to the high school this year, when we're going to run it in the new wing. In the new wing, we can operate the rooms for air conditioning individually, so we don't have to use four rooms on one side, east side or west side, and heat the entire wing, or cool the entire wing. So, basically, the same setup. These are the courses we always put up. Again, we'll just start taking enrollment once we're approved, and we will run it at high school. There'll be two GMS classes, I believe, just first semester, first semester, then we'll be down to just the high school classes. Seeking to run it the same as we have in the past. Now, I'm told there's a correction that you do have in terms of the pay. Is that correct?
Yes. So it's that second page. It's the hourly rate. Right here. Should be 28.54 instead of 25.86.
That's what the current contract states, 28.54.
All right. Any questions?
So like, if I can't make driver's ed in June, is there another one later, or what's my option at that?
Yeah, there'll be, there'll be June and July, if enrollment calls for that. We've done that before, we run both months, and remember, it's, it's even shorter, because it's paired up with consumer ed. So they go the first nine days, consumer ed, while another group's in driver ed, then they flip-flop for June. And then, we have enough kids, we'll do the same thing in, in July.
I'm making a motion to approve the summer school.
As amended, though.
With this...
Yeah, with the correct... Right. May...
28...
54.
54 for the summer.
And actually, the action item is for the course offerings.
The course offerings, right.
Right.
Okay. I'm just, I'm making a motion to approve course offers.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Brandon. Any further discussion? Nope? Betsy, please.
Seren.
Yes.
Weitzel.
Yes.
Worley.
Yes.
Yerivitch.
Yes.
Maddox.
Yep.
And Kopp.
Yes. Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
7-5, got a technology update. Josh?
Thanks for your time. I just wanted to take a time. We met as a tech steering committee last Thursday, I believe, and it's been a while since I've gotten to do an update for you guys, so I wanted to take a moment and do a quick update and make sure everybody's on the same page here. So, a couple of things I wanted to touch on. Last meeting, then I'd come to you guys back, we had a couple of main bullet points. One was that we approved Chromebooks for, we outfitted the rest of GMS, and we purchased three karts for GHS, and then BCF matched that, which gave them a total of six karts. All the Chromebooks have been rolled out and have been used, used now that, you know, bigger question is, once you get some out, you know, they can never have enough type of deal. So they are being used, so I wanted to make sure everybody was aware that those are out and about and in good hands, which is the students' hands. We'd also approved the GHS phones and CES phones, and both of those were complete, to my knowledge, have been working great. So, those have also been complete. And the biggest ticket item, really, that I wanted to take a moment to talk about as far as my update, was I wanted to get, make sure we, you guys were publicly recognized as well for, for the backing of this, but the big turnaround is actually, I believe ago, a year ago this month, that I came, came into Ball Chatham, and right around the park, and from what I've been told, park, taking the park, was night-and-day difference last year compared to this year. We tested grades three through up that took the park test, all online this year. Last year, I know the younger levels did it, some on paper and pencil, but we did entire wings. We did, I believe, 120 in the, was there roughly 120 kids in one room in GHS, little to no problems. Actually, I'd say probably almost zero problems as far as what we could control. It was more user accessing the park system in general. So, I wanted to publicly say thank you, because something like that couldn't have been possible without you guys backing the technology. And I wanted you guys to realize what grade of turnover we had. I mean, it was a night-and-day difference. I can tell you how many compliments I filled in from teachers, administrators, and is a huge relief, so I wanted you guys to be aware of the appreciation that is out there for the technology turnaround, so...
And board members, too.
And board members, too, so...
Students.
Students.
Yeah.
But I just wanted you guys to realize that without you guys backing, it wouldn't have been possible, and it was, is a great success. So that was a big thing I wanted you guys to be aware of. So that was it, as far as on the update-wise. Now, it's, now it's time to, we're kind of able to look into the future, and that will be technology's next big step, is where do we take technology moving forward now?
Josh, I just wanted to take just a moment to the board. You know, park testing is a big deal, any type of assessment, and it's a huge, huge undertaking. So, not only, I mean, you're up there giving a lot of kudos, but you deserve a lot of kudos, as well as your team. The way you roll it out, the way you work with the buildings, I also wanted to extend that to our administrators as well. I've set up many test schedules, and it's very difficult to put those together, and the teachers and the work, and they work with the administration to make sure that all the kids are, you know, able to test, because there's specific protocol to assessments. So, it was really a team effort, and I didn't want to gloss over that, I know you weren't, but I want you to know from, from a superintendent and a community member's perspective, who had a little bit more insight as to what was going on, it was truly a tremendous feat on behalf of our administrators, on behalf of our teachers, and on behalf of our administrative or technology team. So, I just didn't want that to not go unrecognized. So I want to thank all of you for your efforts there. Very good, yes.
So that was, yeah, that was it on the update, and now the future is bright in technology. So now it's time to move forward with it.
So, you know, you're setting the bar pretty high, Josh.
Yeah, that's all right. That's all right. I like a challenge.
Okay.
And the biggest ticket item really that I wanted to take a moment to talk about as far as my update was, I wanted to get, make sure we, you guys were publicly recognized as well for the backing of this. But the big turnaround is actually, I believe, ago, a year ago this month, that I came into Ball Chatham. And right around the park, and from what I've been told, park, taking the park was night and day difference last year compared to this year. We tested grades three through up that took the park test, all online this year. Last year, I know the younger levels did it, some on paper and pencil. But we did entire wings. We did, I believe, 120 in the, was there roughly 120 kids in one room in GHS? Little to no problems. Actually, I'd say probably almost zero problems as far as what we could control. It was more user accessing the park system in general. So I wanted to publicly say thank you because something like that couldn't have been possible without you guys backing the technology. And I wanted you guys to realize what grade of turnover we had. I mean, it was a night and day difference. I couldn't tell you how many compliments I filled in from teachers, administrators, is a huge relief. So I wanted you guys to be aware of the appreciation that is out there for the technology turnaround.
And board members, too.
And board members, too. So.
Students.
Students.
Yeah.
But I just wanted you guys to realize that without you guys backing, it wouldn't have been possible. And it was a great success. So that was a big thing I wanted you guys to be aware of. So that was it as far as on the update wise. Now it's hard to, we're kind of able to look into the future. And that will be technology's next big step is where do we take technology moving forward now?
Josh, I just wanted to take just a moment to the board. You know, park testing is a big deal, any type of assessment. And it's a huge, huge undertaking. So not only, I mean, you're up there giving a lot of kudos, but you deserve a lot of kudos, as well as your team. The way you roll it out, the way you work with the buildings. I also wanted to extend that to our administrators as well. I've set up many test schedules. And it's very difficult to put those together. And the teachers and the work, and they work with the administration to make sure that all the kids are, you know, able to test because there's specific protocol to assessments. So it was really a team effort. And I didn't want to gloss over that. I know you weren't. But I want you to know from a superintendent and a community member's perspective, who had a little bit more insight as to what was going on. It was truly a tremendous feat on behalf of our administrators, on behalf of our teachers, and on behalf of our administrative or technology team. So I just didn't want that to not go unrecognized. So I want to thank all of you for your efforts there. It was very good, yes.
So that was, yeah, that was it on the update. Now the future is bright in technology. So now it's time to move forward with it.
So you know you're setting the bar pretty high, Josh.
That's all right. That's all right. I like a challenge. I'm going to stick around because I'm up next as well.
7-6 Firewall?
Yeah. So just to bring everybody up to speed too on some items here. First, the firewall in general, if, the very first Technology Steering Committee, if we can remember that far back, I identified several things. But firewall was on the list as far as one of the big things that I still felt like. That's all right. Thank you, I'm good.
Technology.
This is why we need to keep moving forward.
I didn't touch it, I swear.
That happened to Steve Jobs as well.
Maybe you can switch it over to that PC.
You can switch it over here. I'll steer.
Sorry, I don't know what it was.
I'll steer. I did that on purpose. But yeah, back then, back even when I first came, we identified several things. And I said back then, we are going to have to upgrade the firewall. It's just not going to be able to keep up with the load that we're getting ready to put on it. We did write out this year, and I'll tell you the biggest reason, and that might be a good question as well, if it was a problem, why did we take this long to address it? And quite honestly, the bandwidth that we are rated at, we receive that we are paying for, the current firewall wouldn't support anything over that. So it was kind of silly to say, hey, let's buy a new firewall that supports 500 or a gig. And well, we don't need it right now. We're already in contract for only 200. It's kind of smarter to write it out. It wasn't bad. There was times, you know, parts of the day where you could tell things would get sluggish. But it is still, you know, we got through it type of deal. The other thing, once I came, we realized we had been awarded Category 2 E-Rate money, which a firewall goes into Category 2 E-Rate money if approved. And what E-Rate will do is basically, we qualify for 50%. Now, the 4187056 isn't totally E-Ratable because we are also basically taking one device and, or taking three devices and migrating into one. So not all of that's E-Ratable, but about 25,000, I believe, of it is. Which is, means we'll be on the other hook of that 25. And to think about it, and if I known Tracy was here, I would have done a light and music show just to try to one-up her. But I didn't realize she was going to be in attendance tonight. But to think about it, here's the easy way to think about it. Every time something passed to go through the internet, they got to go through a set of doors or a set of checks. Right now, we have three devices. We have a firewall, a content filter, and firewall, content filter, and a router. Okay? And each one of those, you're basically going up, can I pass? Yep. Can I pass? Yep. Can I pass? Yep. Well, each one of those, the more people that come up to that device, the more they're going to have to wait in line, go, wait in line. So there's chances bottleneck. So we're taking those three devices, putting it into one. So now there's just one huge line where these people or our data can flow through. Okay? The other thing, which will be on there, coming up here too, is we're only rated at 200 gig. I've told, said it before, 200, or 200 meg. 200 meg for a district our size isn't going to cut it. Okay? Right now, if we do move forward with one-to-one, or even not at one-to-one, but we keep adding devices to the high school or in the lower levels, whatever that device is, it's going to need bandwidth. And we're almost topping out right now. We add, let's say if we did get one-to-one at the high school, what's 1,400, Jim, roughly? 1,400 more devices, which we only have like 300 Chromebooks roughly at the high school right now. We add that many more devices, it's going to be that many more things going to get through that door. So right now, we don't have a device that's going to handle it. That's why my recommendation would be approve this regardless of the E-Rate. We're going to have to do this. If E-Rate comes through, great. We only have to pay 50% of it. But we are going to have to move forward with this one regardless.
Is this a one-time fee? You said the last one in the contract was an.
So we pay for the device a one-time fee. And then we'd have to pay yearly for the license, which is, it's like that on every device. So you're, and it's like even on the devices we have now, we have to pay yearly device fee. For like our content filter that it's replacing, you got to pay every year for them to keep that up to date.
Will we be to the good then, when you take the three renewal fees versus this one?
This, you're going to be, you're going to have to pay a little bit more just because you're getting obviously a higher-end device and one, you know, it is gauged by the type of model you have there. So if you're putting out something that's going to have a little bit higher grade model, then you're going to have to pay a little bit more.
What, give me an idea. Do you know what?
12.
12,000 a year?
Yep. And that's for three devices, three services, too. Yep.
Is it all software upgradable or is it hardware?
It's a hardware box.
Okay, so if you wanted to upgrade, you're going to have to remove the hardware.
Yep. And that's why we went with this model. I, every vendor, and so you guys know, anything you put on E-Rate has to be bid out. So this is, went through all the vendors. And every vendor I filled out a phone call with was, you know, one, we're going to a gig of internet. So I don't want to have something that's not going to handle that. And I don't want to, again, come back to you guys in two years and say, well, we outdrilled that. Now, if the market, the housing market booms up again and we get an influx of kids, then we might have to deal with that. But at least now, I'm saying this device will support us moving forward. But yeah, Greg, if we have to put it in, and you know, moving forward, I don't know where we'll be in three years. We might have, this district might be so big in three years, we might have to put a separate one of these at GIS. You know, and to take away some of that load. And do half the school, half the district on one and half the district on the other. But at least this will get us where we need to be for sure moving forward.
Then did you say, we didn't bid this out ourselves? The state does it for you or something?
It's actually federal. So, yeah, you, basically, it's done in two steps. You put, fill out a 470, which is a wish list, so to speak. So you say, this is what I want, non-vendor specific, nothing, it's just, this is what we need. It sits out there for 28 days. And the vendors basically say, here's what we want. They'll call me, they'll say, this is what, you know, get more information. And then at the end of that period, E-Rate bidding closes. You get your list of bids, you fill out a 471 off those and say, this is what I want to go with.
Do you get a lot of bids on something like that? No?
More than you'd see, but not a whole lot. It's the same players on, you know what I'm saying? And a lot of times, you might not, and you might actually have to go to somebody and say, hey, because you have to have it. And say, I need a bid for this. I need a quote, I need a firewall, and I need it to do this. So there's nothing out there that says they have to do it. But there are enough vendors out there that makes it competitive for sure.
So moved. One second. Any further discussion? Betsy, please.
Yep, Yaribit.
Yes.
Maddox.
Yes.
Seren.
Yes.
Weitzel.
Yes.
Worley.
Yes.
Cobb.
Yes.
And it's not turning back on, Josh.
Okay. I'll steer for you, Betsy.
7-7, E-Rate.
7-7.
Category 2 radio.
So again, this is looking forward. And a big thing here too is, when I came in, there's maybe the biggest glaring problem in technology was, we weren't able to be proactive. You know, we, as a district, let this thing turn into an unyieldly beast that it took 1. whatever million to fix. So we need to turn into proactive. We don't need to wait until technology is so far behind that we're thinking, you know, now what are we going to do? So we're in a good spot now. It's time to be proactive. And again, this is, this was on our wish list. Moving forward, right now, the radios between the buildings are rated at 100 meg between the buildings. I want to get all of the buildings, because all the buildings have to go out to high school. Even this building has to go out to high school. So the high school could have 1 gig of internet. Well, if I only got 10 meg to get over to the internet, this school, this building's never going to see it. Same thing with all our other buildings. So eventually, we'd have to upgrade these again to, for those guys to get the full quality of what we're going to need to be at. Again, being proactive, if this is E-Ratable, this is totally E-Ratable, the 68970. If we're in a chance that, and I'm going to tell you now, if we don't do it now, I'm going to come to you maybe next year or the year after for sure and say, we need to do this. But right now, if E-Rate comes through, I'm saying, let's do it now. So we're only on the ticket for 50% of that. We can pay 50% of it now or pay it 100% later. And that, how E-Rate works is usually they say, you're funded for five years, this is your lump sum money. But unfortunately, we also know how the government works and that money, I'm not going to guarantee is going to be there next year.
And was that, is this, E-Rate is fed?
Yeah.
Is that state?
Fed.
Fed. I've never seen it not get funded. But, you know, there's going to be a change of office. And that was one of, the current admin put a lot of money into it. Whether they take that away, I don't know.
And you know that we're going to get half of this paid or we're hoping?
What, so in E-Rate 2, what you can say, when we award our 471, we can say, with the contingent, that we are E-Rate funded. So this one, can we get a Wyatt next year without it? Probably. So we're going to roll the dice and say, if we don't get it this year, we'll wait, we'll put in 471 again next year and see if we get it. But if E-Rate says come through and says, you're good this year, we pull the trigger.
So if we approve this and you.
You put it in your contract that says barring E-Rate funding. And they, they know, they know that's how it works.
We could approve this and not buy it.
Yeah.
You'll let us know.
And that's what I put, I believe I put in there, awarding this project is contingent on the district being awarded E-Rate Category 2. But I need to know now, that's the thing. I can't wait until we find out, especially this project, because this will have to be a summer project. And on your 471, you have to award your contracts before they actually push the deadlines into May right now. In May, I don't know the exact date. But if you haven't filled this out, then it's, well, you didn't fill it out the thing, so.
The one of the things that I would like to particularly point out is that I appreciate that you're buying these things out of your current tech operation funds. And we do not have to incur debt.
And that's the thing, I.
And that is really, I really appreciate that. We've got to start thinking that way.
Froze mine really early because thinking bigger picture. I knew I wanted to do this at the end. So I've left it sitting there and put some needs, maybe that weren't as great as I feel like we need to get this done first.
Yeah, well, congratulations.
Thanks.
Very much appreciated.
So moved.
Second. Betsy, please.
Maddox.
Yes.
Seren.
Yes.
Weitzel.
Yes.
Worley.
Yes.
Yaribit.
Yes.
Cobb.
Yes. 7-8, E-Rate Category 1 contract.
Okay, so the last, I talked about the radios was Category 2, the firewall's Category 2. Those are the two, the Category 2s before this year was maybe Ball Chatham would never get. But moving forward, Category 1, Ball Chatham always gets. Okay? Category 1 is basically your data and your phones. The bad news with the phones is because of bandwidth movement or making sure all schools get heavy bandwidth in their schools, they're taking basically the funding away from phones and saying, we'll give it to you more on the bandwidth. Okay? So we also have to be proactive and try to start saving money on our phones because E-Rate's not going to start giving us money back on our phones after next school year, I believe it is. So we need to get those phone, or those bills as low as possible right now. The data, again, currently, we have 200 megs of data. Worked out, working out a deal, again, this was bid out. And we've had several come through and bid it out. I'm going to recommend moving forward Comcast, there's zero build cost, which that means is Comcast will pay for all the build to get their fiber into the school. And basically for, I believe, for 1,650 is what will come out of our pocket on a monthly basis right now. We'll get 1 gig of internet. Right now, we pay CWLP, we pay them $1,500 a month, and we pay ICN 1,100 or 1,300 a month. So again, taking two people, turn them into one, saving money, and, I mean, going from 200 to a gig in data. Which is where, is really great for this school as far as speed. Hitting on it too is the phones. If we do Comcast fiber, we can do Comcast phone service. Right now, on average, I believe the high school phone bill by itself is like 1,100, 1,100, I think? Or $1,300 a month. Okay? That's just GHS. GES, and I'll tell you why I'm pointing these two schools out, is $474 a month. Okay? I can take those two schools, put them into one system because we already approved the high school going to the new system, put those on one phone system from Comcast, and it's 289 a month. So I've taken two phone bills, turned them into one, 289 a month. Now, I'm telling you, 289 a month, it might be 350 because each school does have to keep an analog for fire. High school keep, have to keep their elevator phone. So we'll have to keep an analog phone, which is roughly 40 bucks a month. Okay? So there is, but regardless, instead of, if it's Russ, Charlotte, whoever it is, they're saying, well, what should we budget for the high school phone bill a month? I have no clue right now. But next year, I can say 289. Okay? And.
Why wouldn't you have an idea now, based on per call or something?
And it's.
Long distance.
Long distance, and here's where they get you on long distance right now. Long distance for us to pick up a phone and call Rochester, Auburn, long distance. That's part of long distance, not to mention your out-of-state long distance. Comcast intra-latric calls it's called are all free. 217 area codes, all free.
This is all going VoIP, right?
The phones will be IP, yeah.
So that'll take care of a lot.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. So yeah, that's what I'm saying, all your intra-calls will be free. And then they give you so many true long distance, 4,600 long-distance calls that we'll probably never hit, to tell you the truth, of free. For that, for that school. Okay? And then I would recommend putting one, again, save money. We could put one at DO, we could put one at CES, and we could put one at GIS, depending on 7.9. But we'll get to that later. Okay? So again, you're locking those phone bills in at that low amount. So on 7.8, the biggest thing I wanted, I need your approval on is awarding Comcast the data plan and our phone bills on those buildings.
So moved.
Nice.
Betsy, please.
Okay, hold on, so Wayne and then Maddox are.
Yeah, I'm ready, second.
Maddox.
Yes.
Seren.
Yes.
Weitzel.
Yes.
Worley.
Yes.
Yaribit.
Yes.
And Cobb.
Yes. 7-9.
Okay, 7-9. This is my last one. 7-9. And again, the biggest thing to keep in mind when I'm coming to you with this, again, there's money in the lines that I was in charge of to cover these. So again, know that. On this phone consolidation, again, this was my overall idea blueprint, if you will, for, to get Ball Chatham all on the voice-over-IP phones, all on the Mitel system. Basically be a phone call away, district-wide, four-digit extension.